... guidance as we move into 2020, where we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we'll do some swearing in. Roll call?
Okay, roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Present.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, here first. I'll swear you in first. We'll do it here?
Picture.
Up front? Okay. Put your right hand up. Okay. I, Eric Bassett.
I, Eric Bassett.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced.
I shall not be influenced.
By any consideration.
By any consideration.
Except that of merit.
Except that of merit.
In fitness and the appointment.
In fitness and appointment.
Or discharge of employees.
Or discharge of employees.
I shall not make or authorize.
I shall not make or authorize.
The expenditure of public money.
Expenditure of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
An efficient service to the village.
Efficient service to the village.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of member of council.
A member of council.
For the Village of Hicksville.
For the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2024.
For the term ending December 31st, 2024.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's my wife. My wife's home. When that be 2023? 2024. Do I answer? I, Taylor Clepper.
I, Taylor Clepper.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support.
That I shall support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced.
I shall not be influenced.
By any consideration.
By any consideration.
Except that of merit.
Except that of merit.
In fitness.
In fitness.
In the appointment.
In the appointment.
Or discharge of employees.
Or discharge of employees.
I shall not make.
I shall not make.
Or authorize.
Or authorize.
The expenditure of public money.
The expenditure of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
Service.
Service.
To the village.
To the village.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of member of council.
Of member of council.
For the Village of Hicksville.
For the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st.
For the term ending December 31st.
2024.
2024.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We have in your packet minutes from the meeting of the council applicants. Okay. Now, we're going to elect a new council mentor to take my place to your term. And how this works, we had four applicants, and I appreciate the four. Sheila Baker, Corey Wan, Thomas Luderman, and Larry Shaw. Again, thank you for applying. Now, I'm going to open it up for nominations, and anybody can be nominated. Doesn't have to be those four. So, open the floor.
Mayor, I nominate Sheila Baker.
Okay. Got a second?
I'd like to nominate Corey Wan.
Got to have a second.
Okay.
Quick and...
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Corey Wan.
Okay. A second.
I have a second.
Okay. So, I guess we only have one nomination, since there wasn't a second. Is that right? I don't know. This is the first time I've ever done it in an open session. I don't know what's going on. Well, why don't we go ahead and...
If you look at... Yeah, look in the paper that is in there, and I think it says you don't have to have a second.
Well, if we don't need a second, I close the nominations. Okay. Nomination's closed. Roll call.
Barth?
Yes. Oh, Corey. Corey Wan.
Beverly?
Sheila.
Bassett?
Wan.
Clepper?
Wan.
Ridgeway?
Wan.
Okay. We'll go ahead and swear amen. Your Corey's wife, Troy, would you like to?
Yeah.
Put your right hand up. I, Corey Wan.
I, Corey Wan.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
In the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
In the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced.
I shall not be influenced.
By any consideration.
By any consideration.
Except that of merit.
Except that of merit.
And fitness.
Fitness.
In the appointment.
In the appointment.
In the appointment. Or discharge of employees.
Or discharge of employees.
I shall not make or authorize.
I shall not make or authorize.
The expenditure of public money.
The expenditure of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
An efficient service to the village.
Efficient service to the village.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties of member of council.
Discharge the duties of member of council.
For the Village of Hicksville.
For the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Term ending December 31st, 2022.
The term ending December 31st, 2022.
21.
21?
Yes.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
You know, we have a dress code here. It's got to be Troy.
Oh, my gosh. So, I'll entertain nominations and election of council president.
I'd like to nominate Mike Barth for council president.
A second now.
Second. Any other nominations? Close nominations. Okay. Congratulations. Okay. Roll call.
Barth?
Upstanding.
Clepper?
Yes, or Barth.
Bassett?
Same thing, yes, or Barth.
Beverly?
Sure.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Wan?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Now, we need to amend the agenda. I think you have another one. And the reason it's amended is the Solicitors Report Ordinance 2020-01, a change in the appropriations. So, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion to amend.
No second. Roll call.
It is second, Mike.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Clepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Wan?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do the approval of the regular council meeting minutes. That was December of the 16th. Yeah, it was a long time ago.
I make a motion to accept the bill.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Clepper?
Upstanding.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Wan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Approval bills. I think you just got them. Had a chance to look them over. Questions?
I didn't get a chance to look at them.
Oh, did you? I make a motion to approve the bills.
I had a quick question. Just real quick.
Okay.
Link Computer Corporation, UniLink?
Dawn.
That's all yours? That's your yearly? Is that a yearly support fee?
Is our yearly support correct?
Go.
The Public Works Commission?
Where's that at?
The...
I see it.
Two-thirds the way down.
21094.
Yeah, is that a...
Payment?
Yes.
It's actually three loans. All in one.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Hold those in favor? No, I'm sorry. Roll call.
You'll get it. Wan?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Barth?
Upstanding.
Bassett?
Yes.
Okay. Representative from Hicksville Baseball Association, who wants to speak? Mr. Miller?
All right, guys. Saw in your October meeting, there was going to be a contract written up, and it was going to involve background checks for the Little League, for the coaches. And we're at the point where we have to get the sign-up sheets going and start finding coaches. And instead of waiting for the background checks, we went ahead on ourselves and got background information with the company, JDP. They're the same company that does the International Little League. And as you can see, the cover sheet, it shows what stance we're going to take on the checks. I didn't know if this was going to be good enough for you guys, so we can go forward with it, or something the village wants to...
I had Troy look at this.
Okay.
And got the okay from... He changed a few things. I think one of them, he changed all coaches, not just the head coaches. Right?
Yes, that's in the new form.
Yeah. Okay. And then on number four.
Changed to an OBI.
OBI.
Okay.
So... And I'm sure, does the council need the vote on this?
That's... I don't know. Well, it was in your October...
Well, I had brought it up because it was in park board minutes. You know? And we will bring it to their attention that it was something the park board was looking into.
Yeah, the problem was, you know, this... It's just going to throw more onto us, taking care of this stuff.
Any other... It wouldn't have the vote on it just to bless it.
That's what I mean, unless the...
And it sounds like the softball already does this. They've been...
They're in a league with other towns, though. You know, I mean, we're...
Chief, you have a question?
Yeah. How much is this going to cost?
The coaches have to pay for it.
12...
1295.
All a person?
Yeah.
60 for Defiance County. Right. That's 1295. They're doing fingerprints. Are you guys doing fingerprints?
No. No. It's 1295, and I think it's a $3 or $4 renewal each year when you... So...
It was going to be a lot more than that.
Yeah, it was going to be 60 some a year. That would have been unfeasible, I believe.
So, any other questions?
I would just comment, I think the village isn't managing... That's an independent organization that rents the facilities. So, in my personal opinion, the village doesn't really need to get involved with the day-to-day operations of another independent entity.
Right. Okay.
Except that we've always controlled park board.
But the park board doesn't operate the Little League Association, correct?
No. No, but they're using our fields and everything. You know, I thought it was a wise move years ago, and we talked about it, you know, just having any of the other entities down there. Not everyone, but especially around the kids and everything.
What other employees and volunteers down there that are at the park and are required background checks, are you familiar, Mike?
Right. Well, I know like all the lifeguards and people that work at the pool, being around the kids down there.
Those are village employees, though, correct?
Bill Murphy that works out at the school has to have one done. You know, I know, like you said, the softball association has to have one done.
But like I said, that's a different league with defiance. That's different towns, you know what I mean? This is...
They're associated with those towns, where, in a way, to me, they're associated with the village by using the park and the facilities at the park, you know? And I'm not trying to discourage anybody from volunteering and being coaches.
No, no. Because I'm going to be honest with you, the reason I'm here with these is because of the meeting in October where it wrote that coaches were going to be forced to have background checks. That's the reason we went forward to get it done before. I mean, this is more of a pain to us than anything, to be honest with you, because it's hard enough to get volunteers.
Sure.
If it's something that...
And I know you guys know most of the people. I talked to Justin about this in my office.
Well, we have a board of seven people, and we make the decision. And we do check to make sure that they're not sexual offenders. I mean, we'll be honest with you there, but we never went deep with the...
Okay. Any other questions?
Like I said, I don't know if it's anything we have to discuss with the council, yeah.
Blessing. I'll entertain a motion to accept this. Okay.
I have a second, Jed. Favor that myself.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Clepper?
Upstanding.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Wan?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for everything you do down there.
Okay. Boards and commission? I don't know if anybody's got anything to report. Council committee reports?
Nobody met.
Nobody met? Okay. Kent, you're up. Administrative report?
Well, there's just a couple of things on this whole four-page list I want to get out to the public. Then we'll deal with the rest. First off, street department will still be picking up Christmas trees. They picked up quite a few already, but a lot of people take the decorations and lights off. And then also, in your packets tonight, I gave you a copy of the new recycle schedule. And since Whirlers are not mailing these out to people, there's copies here at City Hall, and it's on Whirlers' website and the village's website. And questions about trash go directly to Whirlers. And then as far as the rest of the report, I guess I'll field questions. If you want to do anything with page one first, then you can handle the bottom of page one and the rest second. Or if you don't have any questions, that's fine, too, rather than read through all four pages. You've got a copy of both of the letters from the EPA, and I've given our side of it. And the rest of pretty much projects coming on here in 2020 and 2021.
Are you looking for a, I guess, direction as how to proceed on the chlorine snubber? I'm assuming that's the proper terminology, the snubber in the chlorine room?
Whoa.
Or is that just going to be handled by a case duty?
Every time we use it on the Bible, you know?
Okay.
Are you going with their recommendation to do it monthly?
This would probably be one we should, just after the last episode of every episode of the week.
I mean, you're not saying you have to, but...
No, but it's probably a wise idea. I know it's going to cost more money, but... And while you're pondering rest of this, I did want to mention the lift station. We're starting to get people putting things down the sewer system that aren't meant to go into the sewers. I happened to be out there the day they popped the lift out of Yoder Lift Station. And evidently, somebody didn't like all their markers they had at home, because it was just full of markers, toys, a couple balls, some clothes. Then when they were bringing the chains up from one of the pumps, there was hypodermic needles sticking to those chains. So, that part's very disturbing, because if somebody gets pricked with one of those, you've got some issues with workers comp and just health in general. So, just a reminder to people, if it doesn't come out of your body naturally, please don't flush it. I don't know how else to put it.
I'd like to see the toilet that can do those things.
I'm surprised some of this stuff makes it through, but...
What all that lift station that serves...
That's pretty much just Fort Worth Tower. The Body Shop and El Grande.
Yeah.
So, pretty much know where some of this stuff's coming from.
Is El Grande in the village?
Yes. And they tie directly into that lift station.
Hurt me if I'm wrong, but have we had problems with that one before, or is it just starting to have issue now?
Constantly.
Well, it's been a while since stuff really got plugged up.
Right.
And in this case, a couple of the capacitors had issues, and then pumps were also plugged. Yeah, the Defiance Avenue's still an ongoing, as always. Thankfully, the other lift stations haven't been having any issues with things that shouldn't be going into the sewer. But I guess I don't know how else you get across to people that you don't flush toys and everything else. I would think that's something everybody ought to know, but just a reminder, that it is costing us time and money to pull pumps and all of that. So, anyway, anybody got any questions on the rest?
I have one question. Maybe Dawn or you can answer. Maybe you can't. Somebody had called, they said something about, I thought we had extra Christmas pickup from Whirlers. Probably don't...
It wasn't going to be either.
Somebody thought that just a normal recycling pickup.
Yeah. And if it would have happened to been your bulk time, or you make arrangements in advance, but they don't do like a general pickup.
I thought we had talked to... Maybe I'm, like I said, maybe I'm wrong. I thought Christmas time...
We did talk about it, but never got in the contract.
That, maybe that week after, they would pick up extra, but maybe I'm wrong.
We did before we went with Whirlers.
I remember meeting with them and asking them that. They act like they were going to accommodate and understand.
Right.
Nothing was ever in the contract, so you know they were going to do it.
Because they had called Whirlers, and they said, "No, just leave it out until we come back around for the recycling day" kind of thing, or the general bulk pickup, so...
Okay. Any other questions for Ken?
Well, the recycling actually starts this Wednesday, so it's every other week from now on, so... So, January's the 8th and the 22nd, and there's some months, there's three, so, but every other week, and it starts this week.
One quick question on Kent's, I guess, would be, are these pretty much cut and dry for the committees that you plan on having?
Yeah.
So, after the meeting, Larry, Corey, and I could get together with Kent and set up a time for the last item on his, to set up personnel, maybe the last part of his fair draft.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that. Thanks for seeing it.
Oh.
I was going to ignore that one.
I'm going to pick his brain.
Nah, I don't want to know.
Dragography. Dragography.
Dragography.
Yeah. Okay. I seen it, though, Ken. We'll honor his wish.
So, any other questions for Ken? Thanks, Kent. Solicitors report, I guess Cheryl, you're going to read those.
First one to answer, Mr. Beverly. I'm not exactly sure why it's declared an emergency. It's the way Troy wrote it. I think it may have something to do with the time constraints of Mommy Valley. Resolution 2020-01, a resolution authorizing the establishment of a Hicksville downtown design review board and adopting design standards and declaring an emergency.
So, you say we don't need it?
Probably do. This is the last time that we had that timing issue.
Okay.
So, are we adopting the design standards tonight as well?
Uh-uh. Mm-mm.
So we're just moving forward with the creation of it?
Correct, right.
Why wouldn't you be adopting them?
And it says, "And adopting..."
Yeah.
Adopting design standards.
Do we have...
I'm assuming this has got to do with that downtown CDB.
Yeah.
I don't know what the design standards or any of that are.
Exactly.
Gray area there.
Yes, it is. And it is to me too, so if Troy was here, I would be able to answer that for you.
Do we know the, do we know the timeline that's driving that?
You can choose not to pass it. You can let it lay until next time.
I was gonna ask if it lays until next council meeting when Troy's available to be here with that hamper timing on that block grant.
Okay.
Section two says the standards set for blah, 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 a copy attached here too.
There isn't a copy?
Haven't seen a copy.
Nope.
So let it lay?
Yep.
I guess that's the wishes of the council, let it lay? Okay. We can pass an emergency next time if need be. Okay, Cheryl?
I think this is just dealing with the standards themselves, though. If you look at section one, it talks about the mayor has authorized a point three residents to be part of this designer review committee. So this is just kind of giving the checks and balances of you appointing people to this, to start the process of adopting the design standards. Has nothing with actually voting on any kind of standards or design of the, or the facilities of the facade. This is just dealing with the next step on section one, the mayor's authorized a point three residents, that's...
Fine, fine, but it said right on there that you were going to adopt the standards.
And this is, this is just kind of setting the standards of section one, two, and three for United States Secretary of Interior has established uniform standards and it's up to the Village of Hicksville and the best interest to the Village to adopt these.
What are those standards?
Right, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying this is kind of vague.
Sounds like a better way. Way too much gray.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay. Ordinance 2020-01, this is one that you haven't seen because it was on the table tonight when I'm finishing up 2019. And the estimated resources for the fire department came in lower than estimated for the year, so it did not match up very well with this budget. So I talked to Scott today and we trimmed a lot, and it's right here. So that's what this is. I need to trim this because when it gets to the auditor, I've already talked to Jill and she said I will get a letter saying I have to do this, so we might as well do it right now.
Okay.
And ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. Whereas the council of the Village of Hicksville has reviewed the annual appropriations ordinance and feels it's necessary to amend certain fund accounts to reflect the actual amounts to be appropriated. And section one, the annual appropriations ordinance number 2019-18, in the amount of 8,445,208,14, will be amended, reflected the following changes.
This is an emergency?
And declaring an emergency.
Okay. Motion to suspend. Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
It's going down?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
That was just to suspend the rules.
On the second, third reading.
Okay. And the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-01, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
Make a motion move.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there an update on the Haynes enterprise that's on the...
Yeah, I didn't ask him when I talked to him today.
Any other questions for Cheryl?
There's no problems with the Haynes deal, is there?
I don't know.
Oh, I thought you said you did talk to him.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, department heads? Chief Denny?
Just a couple things. Received a quote for the, from Phil Shipe on the evidence room getting a climate control. It came in at $3,500. It proposed a grid and cell generator, one six of 2020. I thought that was high for that room they were doing, but I talked to Kent. He said it's not. He said that's probably reasonable for that price to climate control that heat and air.
Is that, that's kind of an L shape?
Based on what we did here.
Is it gonna be the L shape, all of it, or just that?
I think just that, that section.
Still, I was hoping it was going to be the complete L.
So...
Because you have to expand.
So is he putting in a, like a little unit heater or furnace?
It's gonna be like that.
Okay, so it had air course? Okay.
So...
And then I got a second quote on a generator from Darren Brown. It was $6,000. I talked to Kent about that. Kent says, made a call there and get him down there to actually look at it and tell us what, was it kilowatts that we need to know?
Yeah, but I have no idea. Or somebody knows what fishes was and how that worked.
And you know how many kilowatts it's gonna take to run the, if you're looking to run the whole facility? I mean, how many amps are you gonna be pulling to figure out how many watts you need?
Yeah, so we can either look at loads or somewhere like that. Let's see.
Well, I mean, I'll butt in what, I'm sorry. What Darren quoted him was 17,000 kilowatt. It's like a hospital has, basically.
Wow. But not, does it have an automatic transfer switch or?
No, it was a manual transfer switch.
Manual transfer.
And so it's, when Chief brought stuff, I said, well, the best thing would be getting Darren out there, figuring out what size is gonna work for what he wants run, because I don't know what exactly he wanted to run. And then he says, I'm just making a number up here because I know absolutely nothing about these. I'll say 6,000 kilowatt, yeah, we can go to Lowe's, get a cheap one, Darren can look it up. But I don't know what size to get. I don't want to undersize it. I don't want to oversize it.
You know what? The one Darren was getting, do you know what it, how it's powered? Is it diesel, natural gas?
I think it's natural gas.
Yeah, so he would have had to, we would have had that expense on top of the six grand was some of the gas end of it.
Well, if you set it out there by where the meter is, we could get tapped into it pretty quick and easy.
Yeah.
No, but still, I mean, I didn't, if it's overkill with something that size, I mean...
Because you're getting one as big as the hospital, yes. That would be major overkill.
So then...
Did you put, did any of the family put generators out there when they put their homes out there?
Uh, yeah, they're in this, on Taylor Brown's house, they're putting a generator in right now.
You know how big one they put?
I'd have to ask them.
I believe.
Yeah, they all have one right there because they're all on springs, so the power goes up, you gotta keep the pump running.
Right.
The school's is an 80 KW. That's a horse.
Yeah.
But when it's loaded, it's just eager lighting and it's about 31, 32% loaded. I mean, so it doesn't, it pulls, you know, 20, 20 something, 25 amps or so.
Is it diesel?
Yeah. The other pool, 17,000 KW, you're looking at 141 amps it would run.
I say agree with Kent, let Darren look at it and see what he says.
I figure out while...
It's no big hurry, just need to get it done.
Did you get your other furnace put in?
Yes. Yep, it's in, they installed that, it's running, it's working, it's warm in there now.
Thanks to the city employees, they hooked it up, saved us some money. Thanks to Kent's crew.
Yeah.
Well, you'll do a follow-up then on the generator?
Yes.
And also, will you ask Jim if he's including the L shape?
Yeah.
I mean, this is just my opinion, guys, but we might as well get it done while we're doing it. I mean, to, to a year from now or two years from now, he says, hey, I need this extra room, it's gonna be another 3,500. This way it might be just 1,000.
Do you remember how much money you had budgeted for this year for that kind of work, for both?
That, the split, I think they had up to 4,000. The generator, I think you guys had like one to three, and the furnace...
Yeah, I think, I thought the generator was 1,000, I thought.
I thought they gave a room of one to three.
One to three?
Pretty sure. And the furnace was like one to three and that came in under.
Way under.
But I think I'm close on those, I've still got it back in the office.
I thought he was like four to six on, on that evidence room.
Well, that could be, yeah.
I thought the generator was one to two.
I'm quite confident you're safe.
So, so yeah, so that was the other thing I was remembering, the furnace is in in the garage and it's working, it's working great. We received our handguns, but we did not receive yet our holsters or mag pouches for them. They will not be here until February 10th, so...
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Have you been busy out there?
Uh, yeah.
Swam.
Your staff, are there newer guys working out pretty good for you?
Yeah, it's working out awesome.
Okay.
So, it's working out awesome. But yeah, this first year, we started off with a bang so far.
Not a real bang.
Not a real bang.
Keith, I'll give up when we have a meeting for personnel committee. Since I know who's on it now.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, thank you.
Scott?
Just a couple things. In your packet was EMS runs for the year. I'm printing it off for you. And on the table tonight was the total for both fire and EMS. We had a total of 487 runs for the year. 76.59% of that was EMS.
That's down from last year, isn't it?
It's a little bit, I think.
Which is good.
And I had applied for a grant with the State Fire Municipal Office for our Marx radios. I tried to get more radios, we were not awarded that. We were awarded $1,680 for the user fees for the year. So that's taken care of. Other than that...
Yeah, how much, I see, how much we've been sent out for billing, how much, you know, how much we've collected on that percentage-wise or?
The question rate is, do you know Cheryl, but Kent?
No. I know there's been some years we've built a lot and haven't received a lot.
Right.
When do the township contracts come due?
They're due July 1st. So we have that to get to work on.
Have you started?
Not yet. I have the numbers in for the last year, so.
Couple of them are a little hard to work with.
How's your staffing with EMS and everything, getting people to run their shifts?
Pretty good. The first responders have helped out a lot. We do have some interest in EMT class as well, so just keep going forward.
Sure, thanks.
We'll probably get some more first responders signed up too, I think.
Great.
See how the first work out. I think a lot of people are just kind of hanging back to see how it's gonna work.
Sure.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Did you guys proceed with hazmat training?
No, I haven't. I need to talk to Julie and get a date set up and...
But you are proceeding?
We will proceed with it, yeah. Technician level.
Great.
Any other questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. Park director, Val?
I have nothing to report.
Are y'all closed up, Val?
Haven't been.
I still see a lot of activity down there.
Yeah.
Going to open the pool since it's back to 60 degrees now?
Yeah. Okay, Cheryl, your report, please.
I have your fun status for the month. Well, it's also for the year. December collections of the utility, the income tax, and the mayor's court. Julie also put in her year-end mayor's court report. Mike Bailey turned in his 2019 permit list. And I've given you a list of public official trainings. And the last one that I typed up was different conferences and things that are not mandatory at all, they're just optional, that you can go to. And if you don't have any questions about that, I have a question for your firefighter dependence group. We need two councilmen to serve on that. The ones who were on in 2019 were Larry Ridgeway and Ron Beverly. Are you going to stand?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yes, Cheryl.
All I've got, unless you have a question?
Anybody having questions?
Are we just drawing straws for the training, for the required training that Jesse was requesting?
I got mine done.
I started mine.
We all have to do it, go on the R cap website and there's training courses, and Ron's done some, and Eric said he just got some.
I started, done.
Started? What, just now?
I can start later if you want.
He's mentally on page two.
They've always asked the committee to do it, be more up to date on regulations and change and different things like that, but now they're asking all the council and it goes towards our asset management plan. Once you, once you get a class done, give the paperwork a certification that you've completed it, to Cheryl, that's gonna go into a file and Jesse can submit it to the EPA, so we're all asked to do, to some degree, some of those training stuff.
They want it 50%.
Yeah, for the funding, you gotta have to, yeah.
I'll keep track of all that. And they have new council training too, in three different months, I think. Three different towns, far away. And I have those listed there. And if you want to go to those, let me know so I can make all your reservations and everything.
We can do all of them, I can't get here.
Do council training, you can go to, to, to all council members.
Okay, moving on. Mayor's report, the planning commission. Alan Hilbert and Nub Keys are dropping off. Well, I thank them for the many years being on that commission. And Susan Gonwick and Megan Gober are the two new members that said they agreed to do the planning commission, so I need the council's approval of that.
Alan Hilbert, he's kind of a, kind of a quitter, isn't he? God, he turns 100 years old. Man, he don't do nothing.
He's, yeah. So anyway, those two are off, they asked to be off and we got Susan and Megan, so I'll entertain a motion, put those two on.
I think I motioned up for...
Second?
Mayor recommendations are...
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll do the recommendation, so roll call.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Okay, you have the new list of committees?
So they're taking over the planning commission for their two spots, so do you know which one has a longer term than the other?
No, I don't.
Does that matter?
I'll ask Mike Bailey.
Okay. And there's a few other committees I have to fill, but I wanted to get the main ones, the ones that meet more regularly, so. I guess, shouldn't be any questions. And I'd like any goals anybody has for the city. Email me, call me, stop in. I'll listen to you and see what you would like to see happen within reason, but I've got a few goals, but I'd like to hear a little input on that, so. Anything else needs to come before the council?
I guess for dealing with park board, now that Cory's a council member, he can't be on the park board or park board president, so park board's gonna need to, he can be the liaison, but he can't be as a park board member, or a park board council person.
Right. So... Does it matter if there's two on there since Taylor's already on there as council rep?
Taylor is the council representative.
Taylor at Mike's place?
Yes.
Yeah, but we weren't sure what, who was gonna take, get that seat, but then Cory's real active in the park too, so I don't know if you still want that position.
I just wanted somebody young with kids to be on it? Yeah, I'm just saying, somebody needs to fill Cory's spot on the park board.
Okay.
Because you can't...